Okay. Good evening. I would like to call to order the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for November thirteenth, 2023. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the role of the members?
Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Valerie Nosler Beck.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Rachel Holte.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. We have a quorum. Thank you, and councillors all, thank you for joining us. In your packet tonight, we have several minutes and study session notes. We have the study session notes for October second, 2023, city council meeting minutes of October nine, 2023, study session notes for October sixteen, 2023, city council special meeting minutes, October sixteenth, 2023. Are there any corrections to be noted to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes and notes are approved as presented with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda as published. We have a special meeting tonight. We have several proclamations and ceremonies, so I'm going to go to the podium. We have, we have several of our members who are, who are leaving us tonight and several new members who are joining our council tonight. If I could ask Councilwoman Judy Hutchinson to please join me at the podium. You got it? All squared away?
Thank you.
Terrific. Well, Councilor Hutchinson has, has been our member from District One for the last four years, and I want to say that it's been really an honor and a privilege to serve with you. You were very faithfully represented, your constituents and the whole city. And really, we've done great work at the council, and you are part of that great work. So I want to thank you on behalf of the council and the, and the citizens of Wheat Ridge, and, and thank you for your service, and, and it's really been a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you.
So, our manager has a, we have a little photograph for you here of picture from, picture from Wheat Ridge, not sure which.
Is that like Prospect?
I think it is, Prospect Park, one of our beautiful parks. And we have a a bouquet, and we're going to, we're going to show that, show that to everybody here, and then we're going to get to take that home with you. Try to hold that.
All the councillors are taking their little flowers home.
And then, well, we do, but they're, they're not on duty here.
Oh, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, let me find them.
Well, good.
Okay, just a few. Seriously. Okay. Thank you very much. I want to thank city staff. I've really enjoyed working with you, and you really helped me a lot when I needed help with a lot of things. And also going through the COVID outbreak, okay? Then the wonderful cyber attack, okay? So, very much you helped me out, and all the departments were just really great for me. There's three things that I would like to just acknowledge while I've been on council, things that we've passed or have revised. And one of them is the noise ordinance. This was a really great thing because it's cut and dried black and white, and I think it's very easy, and it's, this is a good thing. The other item is short-term rental licensing. And then also limiting the percentage of units that can be in each district, okay? This has been going on for years, and finally, there's some type of a solution for this. Another item is bulk plane. That's also been going on for years, and we had many residents, citizens that would come up and be diligent about voicing their concerns about it. And I just want to recognize Dorothy Archer. She was here a lot, and also there are others. And this is, this is just the perseverance that Wheat Ridge residents can have to help to get things passed. So, that's, that's great. And I just want to say the best to city council, and please take care of Wheat Ridge, because I won't be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judy. I would like to invite Councilwoman Valerie Nosler Beck from District Four to please join me at the podium. Val, also known as Councilor Nosler Beck, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service on our council. You've been a really stalwart member of our council. You've worked diligently with the other members on council and myself and our staff to really represent your constituents, represent the whole city of Wheat Ridge, and do the best that you could do to make a successful council vision come true. And it's, and it's truly happened. You've been, you've been very instrumental in, in bringing forward legislation and helping guide our discussions. And I speak on behalf of the city council and all of the citizens of Wheat Ridge to thank you for being here, thank you for your service, and we look forward to you continuing to be in our community and continuing to let your voice be heard. So, thank you so much. You may give me a repub-
I think it's awesome that you use the word stalwart, Mayor Starker. That's in the CSU fight song, "So Go Rams." You never hear that word. I wrote just some things down that I wanted to share with everybody today. And I'm going to take my mask off because it'll be around me. You all are used to me like getting teary-eyed and sniffling at the microphone, so just same old, same bow. I'm so grateful to be here with all of you to welcome our new and incumbent elected city councillors and electeds tonight. It has been a tremendous hon- honor to serve Wheat Ridge as city councillor the past four years. We've been through a lot, like Judy said, and discovered so much together. I want to start by thanking, this is what I'll cry, my family. Talia Coco and Sam, you all were in it from the very beginning with me, and the reason I wanted to serve our community in the first place. Thanks to my dad, who also helped me knock on a bazillion doors. Thank you to my family and friends and business colleagues that gave me grace when I had to focus on this work instead of my other priorities. Thank you so much to the Wheat Ridge staff and the Wheat Ridge Police Department. You all know how special you are to me. And just think, now you won't get as many random texts from me about check-in times at Anderson Pool, Karen, or traffic lights being out. I'll probably still bug you though. Also, thank you Wheat Ridge lifeguards, woo-hoo! Thank you to my colleagues on the dais and who serve in elected office. I've learned so much from you, and thank you for listening to all my stories about my great-great-grandparents. I love to share so much. I really had hoped to serve my community for another four years if elected, but cancer had another path for me this fall, but it came time to run. I want to thank Dan Larson and Larry Matthews for stepping up to run to serve our community in District Four. I know Dan will do a great job as city councillor. I ran for office because I wanted to elevate the voices of parents who are paying so much money for childcare and raising across town to make it to a community meeting about the park or street near their home. I ran for this seat because I wanted to help find solutions to homelessness in our community and make people safe. What I found is that being successful at serving this community had nothing to do with why I ran, but everything to do with how I listened to what others needed in this community and helped push their needs forward. Bottom line, people in our community are busy, and they need us in council to do the work they need to get done. I'm so hopeful that this new council pushes forward, leading with empathy and a listening heart. There are so many challenges and opportunities facing this community, and we need everyone at the table. So I end with two pieces of advice. One is one that Zach Urban left us with when he left. Read your packet every time. Read your entire packet. The other is just my most favorite quote of all time by Charles Eames. It says, "Choose your corner," and everything's making me emotional because I'm like seeing my kids out there, but here's the quote, I'm going to try and not cry. Choose your corner, pick away at it carefully, intensely, and to the best of your ability, and that way you might change the world. Thank you, thank you so much. Oh, and Swiss Flower Shop, everybody's got a little bit of Wheat Ridge on their, the dais, take those home with you tonight, please.
Thank you so much. Okay. We will not let our council sit, sit vacant for long. I want to invite Judge Randall to the podium to swear in our new city councillors. I'm ready, if you're ready? Okay.
That's, that's great. Here you go.
I, Jenny Snell, do solemnly and sincerely declare
I, Janice Snell, do solemnly and sincerely declare
And affirm that I will support the Constitution
And affirm that I will support the Constitution
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States
The state of Colorado
State of Colorado
And of course, the city of Wheat Ridge
And of course, the city of Wheat Ridge
And strive to be responsive to all citizens of the city
And strive to be responsive to all the citizens of the city
And will faithfully, faithfully perform the duties of the office of city councillor member
And will faithfully, sorry, I don't have a good And will faithfully perform the duties
Of the office of city council member
Of the office of city council member
District One
District One
Which I am about to enter
Which I'm about to enter
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll give you this to sign, and then I'll, I'll sign another one. Want to do it now?
Yeah.
All right. And I think there's two of them. Mr. Larson, you're up.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Ready, please raise your hand.
I, Dan Larson.
I, Dan Larson.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare
Do solemnly and sincerely, sincerely declare
And affirm
And affirm
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States
And the state of Colorado
And the state of Colorado
And the charter and ordinances of the city
And the charter and ordinances of the city
And will strive to be responsive
And will strive to be responsive
To all citizens of the city
To all citizens of the city
And will faithfully perform the duties
And will faithfully perform the duties
Of the office of city council member
Of the office of city council member
District Four
District Four
Which I am about to enter
Which I am about to enter
And that's it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dan? Congratulations.
I'm hosting all the new faculty here. The new faculty. The freshman class. And here we are. Thank you so much. I'm ready to go back. I, Rachel Holte.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare
Too much chatting back here.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare
Do solemnly and sincerely declare
And affirm
And affirm
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States
And the state of Colorado
And the state of Colorado
And the charter and ordinances of the city
And the charter and ordinances of the city
And will strive to be responsive
And will strive to be responsive
To all citizens of the city
To all citizens of the city
And will faithfully, faithfully perform
And will faithfully, faithfully perform
The duties of the office of city council member
The duties of the office of city council member
District Two
District Two
Which I am about to enter
Which I am about to enter.
Okay, congratulations. All right, next is Corey Stites. Thank you, sir. I am.
I, Corey Stites. Do solemnly and sincerely declare
Do solemnly and sincerely declare
And affirm that I will support the Constitution
And affirm that I will support the Constitution
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States
And the state of Colorado
And the state of Colorado
And the charter and ordinances of the city
And the charter and ordinances of the city
And will strive to be responsive to all citizens of the city
And will strive to be responsive to all citizens of the city
And will faithfully perform
And will faithfully perform
The duties and office of city council member
The duties and office of city council member
District Three
District Three
Which I am about to enter
Which I am about to enter. Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Dr. Kirkpatrick.
All right, do you solemn, I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare
Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the state of Colorado and the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive
And will strive to be responsive
To all citizens of the city
To all citizens of the city
And will faithfully perform
The duties of City clerk
Which you are about to enter
Which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Okay, you good?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Judge?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for all you do. Okay, let's have a round of applause and congratulations to our city council. These are your representatives. Okay, we've got a few proclamations tonight. I would like to invite, we have proclamation to support Small Business Saturday, and I'd like to invite Dominic Breton with the Wheat Ridge Chamber and Tad Overstreet with Local Works and Stylist and Crate to join me at the podium. Maybe Dominic didn't Did he have sent his reggets? Okay. Okay. Well, we, we like to have the Carnation Festival here. So this is a proclamation in support of Small Business Saturday, November twenty-fifth, 2023. Whereas Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting small businesses and communities across the country. Founded by American Express in 2010, this day is celebrated each year on a Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas, since it started in 2010, consumers have reported spending an estimated seventeen point nine billion with a B dollars across all thirteen Small Business Saturdays combined. And whereas, seventy-five percent of shoppers said Small Business Saturday makes them want to shop and dine at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants all year long. That's dear to my heart. And whereas, sixty-six percent of consumers reported the main reason they support small businesses, businesses is because of their contributions to our community. And whereas, sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado supports our small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, and the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth, 2023, as Small Business Saturday, encouraging residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year, dated this thirteenth, the day of November, 2023. Tad, this is for you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Now, on behalf of, of all small businesses in Wheat Ridge, Local Works, Chamber of Commerce, and the WRBA, can't thank you enough for the community and how you guys support us together already today. It's, it's amazing thing to be a business member in Wheat Ridge, and I tell people all the time, they need to come here. I mean, I didn't, I didn't grow up here, but I got here as quick as I could, and don't really want to leave. So, thanks.
Thank you, Tad. Thank you. First day. It's good. Thank you. All right. For our next proclamation, I'd like to invite our Parks and Recreation Director, Karen O'Donnell, to join me at the podium. How are you tonight? Well, good. She was okay?
Yes.
Good. This is a proclamation in support of National Native American Heritage Month, November 2023. Whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous people and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of our country. And whereas, Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas, Native Americans And whereas, Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through the generosity of culture and the continued practice teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas, our country is blessed by the character and strengths exemplified by Native Americans who have answered the call of service in our armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. And whereas, the Land Acknowledgement Committee in the city of Wheat Ridge is working to acknowledge and honor indigenous people who lived and worked on the land we now call home. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is committed to developing and maintaining relationships with tribal communities. And whereas, during the month of November, we honor our native people in this, their ancestral home, and recognize their continued contributions in strengthening the diversity of our society. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Wheat Ridge and encourage all residents to join in this observance, dated this 13th day of November, 2023. This is for you. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Starker. I am accepting this proclamation as the staff liaison for the Land Acknowledgement Committee, and I just wanted to give a really brief update on where we are with our committee work. You all know that the Land Acknowledgement Committee came up with a draft land acknowledgement statement and action plan to go along with that. And we are at the point where we are sharing that information with the 48 contemporary tribes and receiving some feedback. So it's been really exciting to hear back from various tribes in giving us information and feedback on how we can improve our statement and make our action plan even more robust. So we are specifically looking at the six tribes that called Wheat Ridge their home and setting up meetings with those folks to try and further this discussion. And then we will bring back a finalized statement for you all to adopt. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to invite Officer Sean Meck to join me in the podium. How are you tonight? Thank you. And thanks for being here. This is a proclamation for National Veterans and Military Families Month, November 2023. Whereas during National Veterans and Military Families Month, we salute the brave and dedicated patriots who have worn the uniform of the United States, and we celebrate the extraordinary military families whose selfless service and sacrifices make our military the finest in the world. And whereas, our nation's veterans represent the best of America. Generation after generation, men and women have answered the call to defend our country and our freedom, facing danger and uncertainty with uncommon courage. And whereas, our heroes have always relied on their families for strength and support, serving alongside our men and women in uniform, our spouses, siblings, parents, and children, who personify the ideals of patriotism, pride, resilience, service above self, and honor. And whereas, as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, we send our gratitude to millions of service members, veterans, military families, caregivers, and survivors who have served and continue to serve our nation. And whereas, it is not only the person who wears the uniform serving our country, but also their families who make enormous sacrifices for our nation. And whereas, we honor them and their invaluable contributions, we share their pride in our armed forces, and we will never forget what they and their loved ones do for us. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as National Veterans and Military Families Month. Throughout November, a grateful nation in the city of Wheat Ridge can show appreciation to the spouses, partners, children, caregivers, and survivors of our service members and veterans for their selfless sacrifice on behalf of our nation. Thank you for being here tonight. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'd just like to thank the council members. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm very honored to accept this on behalf of the veterans and military members within the city and not only the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our time has expired for the public comment at this time. We will move to agenda item number one. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Consent agenda item number one A, motion to approve the purchase and payment of Tyler Technologies' e-citation summons, zebra printers, hardware, and Brazos software for an initial total not to exceed $142,340. At issue, staff recommends the purchase of 26 zebra printers with batteries and chargers and accompanying Brazos e-citation summons software for City of Wheat Ridge Police Department. Staff has secured negotiated contract terms and pricing under the Sourcewell Master Agreement with Tyler Technologies. Consent agenda item number one B, motion to approve the purchase of salt materials for snow and ice control on city streets from Independent Salt Company in a total amount not to exceed $140,200. The city purchases and applies de-icer materials each year as a part of its snow and ice control efforts. The city has participated in the cooperative bidding process through the Colorado Multiple Assembly of Procurement Officials, MAPPO. To obtain the best pricing, the city will utilize a City of Fort Collins contract with Independent Salt Company to purchase materials for the remainder of 2023 and the 2024 snow season in the amount not to exceed $140,200. Consent agenda item number one C, resolution number 49-2023, a resolution approving a Transportation Alternatives Program grant agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation. At issue, Parks and Recreation Department applied for and was awarded $951,709 from CDOT's Transportation Alternatives Program for improvements along Kirk Creek Trail in 2025, 2026. City Council approval of the enclosed grant agreement is required to accept the funds. Consent agenda item number one D, motion to amend the contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Recreation Center Parking Lot Repair Project to allow for an additional amount of $190,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $809,472. At issue, a contract for the repair of the Recreation Center Parking Lot was approved by the city council in June 2023 in the amount of $485,972, plus a staff managed contingency of $48,500 for a total not to exceed contract amount of $534,472. Subsequently, the city council approved additional contingency amounts of $85,000 for additional items associated with the ADA modifications, electrical vehicle striping, and drainage improvements. calculation of actual quantities of payment removal and installation was well as the underlying geotextile fabric after resulted, have resulted in the need for increased contract amount of $190,000. This would increase the total not to exceed amount of the contract to $809,472. Consent agenda item number one E, motion to cancel the December 18, 2023 city council study session. The city council study session of December 18, 2023 currently does not have any scheduled agenda items to provide the city, to provide time for the city council and staff to prepare for the holidays with family and friends, and seeing there are no items currently scheduled for this date, it is recommended that city council cancel this meeting.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda item. May I have a motion on agenda items number one A through one E?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items number one A, one B, one C, and one D, and one E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Who's second in the motions?
Mayor, Councilwoman Dozeman. Okay, we will go to agenda item number two. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 27, 2023, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 10800 West 48th Avenue from Agricultural One, A1, to Residential Two, R2, case number WZ 2307. At issue, Waylon Foo is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural One, A1, to Residential Two, R2, for the property at 10800 West 48th Avenue. The applicant is the current owner of the property. The zone change will result in a zoning that encourages investment in the site and will enable the land use to become more conforming with the zoning.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, you do so with the understanding that you will speak the truth as you understand it in this public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Elena Levis-Luera. Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to defer to our city attorney. We do have.
Okay.
Some legal advice first.
We have something. So, Mr. Dahl, would you please proceed?
Thank you. Just a couple procedural items regarding the ability of a council member Larson to participate. As council might remember, this comes up occasionally when a planning commission member is then appointed, or is elected, rather, to council seat, but that planning commission member has participated on a matter that, a planning commission that then comes to council, and that is true here. The present agenda item was voted on by the planning commission on September 21st. Councilmember Larson actually, I think, made the motion, if I'm reading the minutes right, on that particular agenda item. So as a result, he has been required to really form an opinion already or render a judgment and vote on that agenda item. Because he's made that judgment, that allows me to tell you that that's prejudgment, and we try to avoid prejudgment on land use cases. And so my advice traditionally is that if someone has made a judgment already for whatever reason, that they be excused from voting on the matter and participating on the matter. However, that decision is for the council because Charter Section 5.9 says that on every matter except personal or private matters, which isn't the case here for Councilmember Larson, the council members must vote unless excused by the unanimous vote of all the other remaining members. And we've seen this before, and so what I would ask in order to get either council's permission for Councilmember Larson to remain or to be excused, I'd ask for a motion. You can take a motion to ask him to remain. If that passes, he remains. If that fails, I'll ask for another motion and we'll take it from there and I'll be able to navigate it for you. But you do need to take a motion to govern his participation under Charter Section 5.9.
Thank you. Councilor Hobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for a motion to not excuse Councilmember Larson from voting on this public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second by Councilwoman. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes. Sorry, yes, Ms. Mayor.
Counselor?
Yes, the reason why I've made this motion is this is the same situation that we had with Councilmember Om and Weaver in the past. When cases come up in front of planning, what they are doing in planning is making sure that the boxes are checked, the i's are dots, and the t's are crossed. When it comes to council, we are looking at it in a whole different lens. And for consistency, because our other past two council members that are seated that were on planning have been not excused by unanimous vote of council, I am asking for council to again not excuse Councilmember Larson by a majority vote.
And would you like to be recognized again, Mr. Dahl?
If I could, thank you.
Okay.
I neglected to say that on these motions, however they go, Councilmember Larson is to abstain. He can push the yellow button for these motions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Dozeman?
So those issues were not passed unanimously, just for clarity, because I do think that it is our job as representatives on council to hold a certain perspective and not have us address quasi-judicial matters before they come to council. So as much respect as I have for Councilmember Larson, as much as respect as I've had for Councilmember Weaver and Om previously, I will continue to hold the point of view that I have for the last six years. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council? Oh, wait a minute. Okay, a question?
So, Councilwoman Dozeman, you're saying that you've voted no on both of those motions in the past?
I believe so, yes.
I don't, I don't understand what has to be unanimous then, if it was not unanimous in the past.
We would need to have unanimous vote to affirm that the counselor would be excused.
Yes, that's right. If this motion passes, I will say you have made a record clearly that there is not unanimous support to excuse him. So if this motion passes, I give you the opinion that that is sufficient evidence in the record that there is not unanimous support to excuse him, which means that he stays. If this motion doesn't pass, I'll ask you to take.
So this motion does not have to be unanimous?
No, it does not.
Thank you for clarifying.
Will the clerk please poll the council? Okay, so as I read this, Councilor Larson is not excused and will listen to the item and will participate in the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could make a little record with Councilmember Larson though, since he is going to stay, as I have done previously, I'd appreciate if I could have that opportunity.
You may, you may question the counselor.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson, thank you for answering these few questions. It's, we've established that you did attend and acted on this matter at the Planning Commission on September 21st. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with the case materials that have been provided to you in the city council packet for tonight's meeting?
Yes, I am.
Do you believe that you can make a fair and impartial decision on the matter before the council tonight based upon what's presented to the council in tonight's hearing exclusively?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much. That's all I need.
Okay. Mr. Goff, I believe we are ready for a staff presentation.
Now I can introduce Elena. Go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't think we'd make it here, so I'm glad we're here now.
We will always get there sooner or later.
Very true. Good evening. My name is Elena Levaslueta, and I'm a planner. Oops, I'm so sorry, I didn't share my presentation. Okay, now we're in business. My name is Elena Levaslueta, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ 2307, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural One to Residential Two at 10800 West 48th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located immediately south of the I-70 frontage road between Parfit Street and Oak Street. The lot measures about .71 acres in size and currently contains a vacant, single-unit dwelling and multiple accessory structures, all built in 1955. The property is currently zoned Agricultural One. The surrounding properties to the northwest and south are also zoned A1. Properties to the east are zoned R2. Most of the surrounding uses are low-density, single-unit, and duplex residential uses, and I-70 is located to the north. This is a view of the subject property looking south from the I-70 frontage road. This is a view of the subject property looking northwest from Oak Street. The applicant is requesting the zone change to R2 so they can subdivide the oversized lot and redevelop it for either two duplexes, two single-unit dwellings, or one of each. The existing lot is currently non-conforming and does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for the A1 zone district. By rezoning to R2, the lot will become conforming and will enable the site to remain consistent with the surrounding area and would not result in significant change to the character. with the surrounding area and would not result in significant change to the character. This table compares the existing A1 and R2 development standards. R2 was determined to be the most appropriate option because it retains the lower-density, single-unit, and duplex character of the area and maintains larger lot sizes. The subject site is also located immediately adjacent to a large swath of R2 zoning, which contains a mix of single-unit and duplex dwellings. The R2 Zone District would allow the applicant more flexibility to redevelop the property while maintaining the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. It would also allow the site to become conforming, as it does not currently meet the minimum one-acre lot size requirement for the A1 Zone District. In a subdivided condition, the site would contain two lots, which are compatible in size with surrounding conditions. With over 30,000 square feet to work with, the subject property could accommodate two single-unit lots, two duplex lots, or one of each that exceed the minimum lot area requirements of R2. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 11th, 2023, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Two people attended the meeting, and notes from the meeting were included in the staff report. Some concerns were expressed about potential increases in density creeping into the neighborhood. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to occupants and property owners within a 600-foot radius. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request on September 21st, 2023. Staff received no comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge speaks prior to this hearing. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria and consistency with the city's comp plan. The subject site is identified as Neighborhoods, a designation reserved for areas where residents of all ages can live safely and comfortably. Defining characteristics of an established neighborhood in the comp plan are consistent character, mature landscaping, high rates of reinvestment and dwelling ownership, consistent maintenance, and high desirability. City goals that are met with the zone change proposal include encouraging reinvestment in the property, maintaining consistent character, and creating opportunities for dwelling ownership. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns in this area, the R2 Zone District is more appropriate to accommodate the applicant's proposal for redevelopment of the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to R2 is supported by the city's comp plan, neighborhood designation, and will allow for the preservation of the low-density and large-lot character of the neighborhood. Additionally, the request supports the goals of the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan for more housing options in this area. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Let me do so now. Don't see anybody hearing to speak, so we'll close that portion of our presentation and go to questions from council of staff. Are there any questions of council or staff, of council of staff? Okay, before I close the public hearing, any, any other questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Dozeman, a motion is in order on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 27-2023, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 10800 West 48th Avenue from Agricultural One A1 to Residential Two R2 on second reading. Order it published and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hobbie.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just would like to make one, one comment to those in the neighborhood that are potentially concerned about the addition of, of a few other residents on this lot. You know, we did take bulk plane into all of our zoning in the city, and that, what that does is it only allows a certain amount of building into the air line. And, and so I think that this lot is a perfectly good size for two duplexes or two single-family homes with the bulk plane regulating the height of it. So I think it's going to be a really great project when it's done. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much. That will take us to Agenda Item Number Three. Counselor Om, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 28-2023, in ordinance amending Article 7 of Chapter, sorry, yeah, 7, Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's billboard requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. At issue, the proposed ordinance updates the city's billboard regulations to accomplish several main goals: to remove lottery process for billboard vacancies, to reduce the maximum number of billboards within the city as they are abandoned, to establish a maximum distance between billboards and the highway, and to clarify existing development standards.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 2023, an ordinance repealing or enacting Section 26-712 of Article 7 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's billboard regulations and making conforming amendments therewith. On first reading, order published, the public hearing set for Monday, November 27, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Om and a second by Counselor Weaver. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Hobbie, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 29-2023, an ordinance approving the rezoning of properties located at 3650 and 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard from restricted commercial RC and neighborhood commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN, case number WZ 23-08. At issue, Bat Cave LLC is requesting approval of a zone change from restricted commercial RC and neighborhood commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN for the properties at 3650, 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change will result in one zoning across both parcels, will provide a continuation of mixed-use zoning from the east, and reflects both of the transitional nature of this location and the character of the Wadsworth corridor.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. I will caution the council that this is quasi judicial. May I have a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor-
The city attorney has come in. As I think I previously mentioned, Councilmember Larson actually also participated in this matter before the Planning Commission, and we can make a much shorter record here. I'll wait until the public hearing is set to go through the motion exercise and the advice to Councilmember Larson. But in order to keep our record nice and clear, I would ask, at least for the setting of the hearing date that he abstained, that will satisfy the charter that he's got, that there has to be a vote on every matter, but then we can defer until the public hearing his participation. So that's just my request that Councilmember Larson abstain on this particular motion, which is merely to set the hearing date.
Should we take a, should we get consent?
No motion necessary.
No motion necessary.
I'm just instructing that he should abstain and alerting council the fact that, that they will have the opportunity to decide his participation at the hearing in the same manner as we did earlier.
Okay. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 29-2023, an ordinance approving the rezoning of properties located at 3650 and 3660 Wadsworth Boulevard from restricted commercial RC and neighborhood commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN on the first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, December 11th, 2023, at 6:30, as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed seven to zero with Councilmember Larson abstaining.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our action items. We will now go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Nothing really this evening. It's, I think it's, I'm sorry, it's hard to follow up with anything after those horrific comments this evening. I do, would like just to thank Elena for continuing professionally to go through that public hearing after, following up after those comments. So that's all I got this evening.
Thank you very much. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will go to Elected Officials Matters. We will start with Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first just welcome Councilmember Snell and Larson. It's so good to have you on the dais, and I'd like to thank council members Nasser Beck and Hutchinson for their service to the city. I've got a couple of things tonight, but what I wasn't expecting to do tonight, but I feel compelled to do, is to read back to us our resolution condemning racism and hate that we passed in June of 2021, or in 2020. Whereas the City of Wheat Ridge, its mayor, city council, city manager, chief of police, the entire Wheat Ridge Police Department, and employees citywide are deeply saddened by the deaths of Black Americans, including the senseless death of George Floyd on May 25th, 2020, in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge affirms that the lives of Black people matter, and the nationwide movement both articulates and brings awareness to the injustices that exist at the intersections of race, class, gender, including mass incarceration, police brutality, poverty, unaffordable housing, income disparity, homophobia, transphobia, gender inequality, poor access to health care, and poor access to equitably resourced education and educational opportunities. And whereas the recent events are a compelling reminder that for the past 401 years, including 155 years since the abolition of slavery in the United States, violent acts and prejudice are perpetuated daily against Black people in our country and in our own community. Racism and hate have no place in our city. There is much work to be done to stop pervasive, longstanding, and devastated racial injustices in our community. And whereas we strive to be a community where all mothers, fathers, and caregivers can raise their children to feel safe and where all people can feel safe, regardless of the color of their skin, the language they speak, their country of origin, their religion, their gender identity, their sexual preference and ability. And whereas we are committed to safeguarding our community against the root causes of and the damages stemming from racism and hate, and to protecting the constitutional and human rights of every person who lives, works, and visits our city. And whereas the Wheat Ridge Police Department is a nationally accredited agency and has embraced the Six Pillars of Policing from President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, including building trust and legitimacy, policing and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, officer training and education, and officer safety and wellness. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge pledges to work alongside community leaders and residents to provide effective public safety while continuing to earn the trust of the community they serve. And whereas this resolution is an important step towards condemning racism and hate in all its forms, and that for true systemic change, it is incumbent on city leaders and community members to listen with open hearts and minds and to take informed, meaningful action. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the mayor and city council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, stand steadfast with all citizens of Wheat Ridge against racism and reaffirm its commitment to fighting for racial justice and human and civil rights for all. And I am affirming my pledge that I agreed to on the 20, on June 2020, and that we have done much work since then, and we have more work to do, but I am steadfast in that commitment. Shifting gears a little bit, Happiness Gardens. It's exciting over there. There's a, a lot of leaves. People have been doing leaf drop, and rumor has it, some goats are coming in the next week. So things are still continuing to happen at Happiness Gardens, not a lot of vegetables growing. And then I just want to bring up, we had a citizen from District Two come and express some concerns about how the city is measuring and reporting traffic impacts from Wadsworth. And I think it would be helpful for council to get an update from city staff in terms of how that monitoring and what are some of the things they're looking at and considering? Because we had one person show up tonight, but it is something Councilmember Om and I have heard quite a bit about. So it would be good to get an update from the city and to see what kind of actions they're taking. I, I know my neighborhood, ton of cut-through traffic you can't avoid at all, but there's definitely things you can do to discourage it and then certainly ensure that the people who are taking those key cut-through streets are traveling respectfully. So that's all I have tonight. I just, I'm ending my comments with a really heavy heart, and it just did not feel good to be on the dais for most of the night tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snell, I don't want this to come as a surprise, but do you have any, any elected officials' reports you would like to report on tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't have a report. I just want to add that I am very honored to be working with all of you. I am very honored to be representing the folks of Wheat Ridge and especially District One. I'm excited to work with all of you and to be here. This was quite a first meeting. Definitely had some, it's hard to put in words, but that was, as we all are feeling, that was difficult. So Councilmember Holtein, I appreciate you reading that again. It's always a good reminder, and I think there is still plenty of good work to do in our community, but I'm here for it.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On a happy note, I would like to thank outgoing council members Nasser Beck and Judy Hutchinson for their service to the community for the last four years, and welcome our incoming council members Jenny Snell and Dan Larson. Welcome. Happy to have you guys. You both have served the community in other capacities, and so I'm happy to see what, see the work that you're going to do on, from the dais. On a heavier note, I definitely want to address the anti-Semitic and racist, abhorrent rhetoric that was, had to, that we had to deal with this evening. It was really hard to hear, and I, it's pretty sickening that we have people that are, that contain that mindset, likely not in our community, since most of those addresses were completely fake, as were the names. But we do have freedom of speech, and so we had to give them their platform. I do appreciate that we, we allow that, but at the same time, very disappointed in, in what was said this evening, and clearly, we have a lot of work to do. So thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it very brief. I want to thank the, the people that live in District Four for having confidence in me and sending me as their representative. And I know that our, my counterpart, Counselor, Counselor Dozeman and I will, will be looking after the people, the people's interest in District Four, as well as the rest of the council and in the entire wonderful city of Wheat Ridge. And I'm really looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Om.
I want to echo what Councilmember Holtein, Dozeman, welcome Counselor Snell, Larson, and thank you, staff, council, and the public for your tolerance of tonight's comments. We will make adjustments as, as we can. This is, this, our community is pretty tight, and my thoughts are with the people of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thanks. I also reflect, welcome, welcome to my table. I, I'm not really able to put into words how I'm feeling right now, but I do want to say that I feel safe in this room with all of you, and I just want to thank you for that. Because it's, it's scary for anybody, regardless of what your background is, to hear that kind of language. And so Wheat Ridge is a safe place. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Jenny and Dan, and I'm excited to have you guys here. You're sort of my table. You're on my side.
It's about take sides now.
And I just want to thank you again to Judy and to Val for their commitment to serve our community for the last four years. It's, geez, I've been here for eight. I have two more to go, and it's really weird, like when we had that Monday off, and it, it was kind of like an out-of-the-blue Monday, I was like, it's just so weird to just have Monday off. But I'm looking forward to the one in December, however, I'll be extremely busy. Anyways, thank you for everybody who just spends their time and- Anyways, thank you for everybody who just spends their time in serving our community. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo what everybody else said about the beginning of the meeting. I thought that was gross and disturbing, and if anybody thought in 2020, we don't need that task force and we don't need that statement, there you go. Point proven, right? We're maybe not as far as society as we would hope, but I think that we are continuing, especially in rooms like this, to take it further and make sure that that's the aberration rather than the norm. So thank you to everybody in this room tonight. And I think it's important, because I took an oath tonight along with five other people to protect the rights of the Constitution and everybody, and it's important that people are able to speak and say what they need to say, whether we agree with it or not. So that's all I have to say on that. Again, I want to thank councillor Hutchinson and councillor Nosslerbeck for their hard work over the last four years. I knew Val a little bit four years ago. I didn't know Judy. In our first meeting, Judy said, well, I'm not here to make friends, but she made a friend with me, and I really appreciated her thoughts and her time. And Val and I got to know each other very well, especially the last couple of years working with the schools, and she's an amazing person, and I look forward to seeing what she does in the future in her political career, as well as in life. Dan and Jenny, councillor Snell, councillor Larson, I'm looking forward to working with you guys. I've gotten a chance to know you guys over the last couple of months, and I know that you guys are going to serve your districts well, and I know you guys will serve Wheat Ridge well, so I appreciate you being here and I appreciate you stepping up to do this. This is a lot of fun. This is something I want to do. And I also want to thank the voters of Wheat Ridge. Last week was election week, so I know councillor Larson, councillor Snell, councillor Holtein, Clerk Kirkpatrick, myself, city treasurer Miller, we're all excited to be here. I want to thank the voters in District Three and Wheat Ridge for passing 2J. 2J is going to be a big, huge step for us, for the future of Wheat Ridge, and I'm excited to see that implemented over the next few years and what we can do with that and how far we can take it. So, you know, as we go into the holiday season and you're looking for presents for people, if you can find it, find it by Wheat Ridge. But if you can find it, find it by Wheat Ridge, and if it's on Wadsworth, that's an even better place to shop right now. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to -- I had coffee last Saturday, was the second Saturday. We have coffee with the mayor. I had a great group of citizens that joined me at Vanola's. We had great conversation, and I really appreciate those folks coming and talking with us and talking with me and letting me know how they feel, because I think it's the interaction that we have with our public that makes our city stronger. I was very honored today, this afternoon, to cut the ribbon on the I-70 32nd Avenue Bridge with Colorado Department of Transportation and our federal and county partners. It was great. Former Representative Ed Perlmutter, who had been there about in March of 2022, was there when we were in a snowstorm, big coats, and it was a great afternoon. I was really, really pleased to see the CDOT officials there. Director Liu and her staff were there, and that's a really -- it's a great new bridge. It's a lot of safety improvements that have happened. The city is continuing to work on safety improvements. We've got beautification and improvements for pedestrian and bicycle features at that location, and we are continuing to make our city safer to drive, walk, ride, and roll through our city. So I want to thank all the partners and our staff. Our director, Deandrea, was there today. It's a great, great event. I want to thank Judy Hutchinson and Val Nosslerbeck for being such great councillors on our staff here, our city council. They were very supportive. They were very energized. They asked thoughtful questions. They deliberated fairly and voted in the best interest of their constituents and the people of our city. They gave us faithful service, and I really appreciate their coming. I want to express a hearty welcome to Jenny Snell and Dan Larson. You join a great city council. It's a bit of an aberration meeting. We don't often get these kinds of things being said in our council, but I think it's a credit to us as citizens of Wheat Ridge and as Americans that we're able to listen to discussion, even as foul as it might be, but we're able to be respectful and we're able to have this discussion, and together we will form and forge a stronger nation and a stronger city. So I thank you all for being part of that. We will be back here next week at study session, if I'm not mistaken, and so
Yes, you will.
If there's no more business -- oh, excuse me. I want to include our clerk here, and I'm glad you raised your hand, because that's how you're going to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make it clear to all of you, a motion to anyone from the public committee listening to the recording of this meeting, the events this evening will reflect what actually happened, and none of the sacrilegious hate called -- I'm running out of adjectives. Commentary that we heard from an obvious chant, we will simply state, and we're not reporting it because of what it was. And we will never report such commentary, even though we must sit and listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more business to come before the council, we stand adjourned.